Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Lord, we are here today with open hands and open heart, ready to depend on your help through today. Help us come together with your guidance, strength, and protection. As we face our new challenges, remember, we are your child. Help us live today and tomorrow and bring honor to your holy name, Jesus Christ.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Here.
Councilmember Natalie Lopez. Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Sherri Guidry.
Present.
Councilmember Dustin Swir.
Here.
Thank you. Fortunately, we have no public comment. We will move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes. Acceptance of the minutes of the April 7, 2020 meeting as published on April 16, 2001.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Guidry and a second, I think it was, Councilman Broussard. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote your machines.
Oh, voice?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's gonna be roll call vote. Thank you, Dan.
I'm voting Mr. Broussard.
Okay, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Councilmember Sherri Guidry.
Yes.
Councilmember Dustin Swir.
Yay.
Thank you. Item three, we have no persons to address the council tonight. We'll move on to item four A.
Resolutions? A, resolution awarding six-month bid for road materials, sanitary sewer materials, and high calcium quicklime pebbles.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilman Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, we're on four A?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, I just got a question. We have some bids, but I'm just giving items to the sewer department and things. What happens? Is these things delivered to the city? Because if you look at someone from New Iberia bidding, and someone from Lafayette bidding, and in Lafayette, it might be four cents cheaper. Do we have to go get these supplies or are they delivered to the?
We try to have them delivered as often as we can, and most of the time, we are able to because our people have some foresight, and I'm not saying that they never have to run somewhere else.
Because it just, you know.
Yeah, no, that adds to our cost.
Yeah, it adds to the cost, delivering, having a man or a vehicle on the road versus it being delivered. I was just wondering about that.
And both Vince and Mr. Leroy are aware of that, so they try to limit that, you know? I wouldn't say that it has to be picked up very often.
And if there's an item that might be six cents more in New Iberia, can they make the call to go get that even though it wasn't the lowest bidder?
Well, we really try to do the lowest bidder, you know?
Okay.
Now, if it's not comparable, and there are times that you have to make sure you're bidding apples for apples, but.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any further discussion?
I've got a quick question. Just when they're, when they're bidding the same, do you split up? Because I see it's both highlighted. They both, they get half of the work?
There are times when the prices are the same, or if it's an emergency situation, as a hole is open or whatever.
You can use.
They'll use either one.
Okay.
Further discussion? I'll ask you for a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Yeah.
Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Councilmember Sherri Guidry.
Yes.
Councilmember Dustin Swir.
Yay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, four B.
Resolution authorizing disaster recovery services to Gardens Disposal LOC and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Guidry and a second, I think, by Councilman Swir. Do we have any discussion on this item? I have one comment on this item. We did this out. Gardens gave us the same price that he did in 2018 as well. We'll get to the next, the monitor Bayrod Habits gave us the same price as well as 2018. We did receive other quotes. This is professional services that normally you don't vote on this. I wanted to bring it forth because there were some cheaper bids. But they were people from Topeka, Kansas, people from Mississippi, people from other areas. The one thing about this is we've always gotten our money with Gardens and the next Bayrod Habits as the monitor, and Gardens as the person who picks it up. One, they pick it up immediately. Sometimes the storm is still blowing, and they're beginning to pick up, so we are cleaned often before cities have even started. They're both local. They do a really good job. The other thing they do, I can tell you, this lady bust her butt to get us our money back. You have worked on Hurricane Barry for, since it happened. And we are in the process of getting back our money. We would not have had a chance if our paperwork wasn't right. And Maxine has spent months and months going back and forth with Gardens, back and forth with Bayrod Habits, making adjustments, back and forth with FEMA. It is very important to have somebody you trust, somebody that's gonna be honest and good with the paperwork and on time with it, or we won't get reimbursed. So I wanted to put it on the agenda just to get it out there that we did take bids. It is professional services. In this instance, I'm recommending that we use these two companies because they do the best job for us. And we'll have the best chance of recouping our money. And Maxine, let me know. I can make this announcement. We think we'll get back close to half a million dollars by the time we're finished with Hurricane Barry, but we're about to get a check back for, what is it, 350-something thousand? That she's worked very hard on. That money will go back into our emergency fund because we know that we're about in hurricane season again. But anyway, I wanted to put it on just to be totally transparent. Is there any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So this particular money is whenever we do get it, we're gonna place this in a disaster fund, emergency disaster fund separately.
The money that we get back from FEMA will go into the emergency fund, yes, because unfortunately, we're under emergency now.
Right.
The unique thing is that, you know, COVID has been an emergency. We know that we'll be impacted from that, as well as hurricane season unfortunately is about to start again.
Is there any stipulations on the money, when we spend, when we spend the money for the next disaster?
Well, as long as it's a declared emergency. Like you see now, I could spend it on the COVID. I could spend it on when there's a hurricane and it's a declared emergency. We, we did spend it on the, which wasn't, we spent some of that money on the computer ransomware hack. And thank God, we had it, got us up and running. So, you know, I come to y'all every time with it so that you know exactly what we would do with it. But it is earmarked for emergencies. Unless we would change that, and that would have to be a vote of the council. Anything further?
Yeah, Mayor, and this is basically renewing a contract?
Yes.
Okay, but it's not, it's not including the renewal, the contract for regular?
No, no, has nothing.
Nothing to do with?
Nothing to do with trash or road debris or anything. This is.
Standby contract.
Standby contract. Because look, if we don't have an emergency, we don't enact it, you know? Actually, we had more than a year. We didn't have a hurricane my first year and a half here. So we never, or all of us, we never enacted it. So it's just a standby contract that if we need it, we've got, you know, the right people waiting to help us.
So Mayor, this is, how long is this for? Like a two-year?
Two years. We bid it out every two years. Yes?
Question. Back in 2016, when the flood occurred, did that, was that declared an emergency? And was, so any debris that was caused by?
It was, but I don't think there was that much from the flood, that much debris pickup.
But we didn't have a storm within our first, like you said, our year and a half.
Yeah.
But then, before we got elected, then they had the flood. Did that ever, does this ever come?
I'm sure there was some, there were some damages, I know, from FEMA that we got money from FEMA. We collected money from FEMA, but I don't know if Garden did much cleanup. Yeah. Anything further? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, in relative to this particular contract, even though it's two different things, what I'm talking about, this is for the FEMA emergency standby contract and just a formality. But I also wanted to address something that is slightly relative to this. It's our present services that we have recently with Mr. Gordon now. And I've been receiving some calls about the services he provides. Apparently, there's, there is some discrepancies from the constituents on what he actually pick up versus what he does not. And first, I just want to thank Mr. Gordon for his service that he do provide to our community and his local company. And at least, like the mayor said, as a mayor and council, we do know and citizens do know what we are getting. I want the taxpayers to know about our sales tax revenue that plays a major role for the yard waste and the trash pickup. Our goal as a team and council is always to improve the quality of life for our citizens, so I wanted to quickly educate and remind our citizens about what is acceptable to be picked up from Mr. Gordon's company. And what's accepted is anything outside the garbage can, such as bags of leaves, sofas, clothes, toys, and of course, those branches that's being cut that our citizens are cleaning up now and putting to the road. What is not accepted will be, will not be accepted. They don't pick up whole house, a whole house that someone has decided to tear down, like even demolition as well, and put to the road. They don't pick up bags of garbage that's left on the outside of the trash can. And they do not pick up whole trees. For example, I had an elderly lady that called me, and she cut down at least two and a half, three trees, I want to say it was stacked up higher than a house almost to the road, and she was complaining, and she was, she just wasn't happy about the lack of services though she thought she was receiving. And Mr. Broussard, I did speak with you. That ended up being one of your constituents instead of mine, but I end up helping her, but I also gave her your phone number as well. And I talked about it recently to you, but let me just say this. One of the things that was mentioned in the call was, don't our taxpayer dollars actually cover this? Don't we pay taxes for this service? And so I just responded, absolutely, we do, and however, we must stay within the confines and the content on what's written in that contract.
And the law.
That's right. And however it's crafted as presently written. And I just wanted our citizens to know that this is a service that's provided by Mr. Gordon and is expected as a business owner that whatever he and this administration put on the contract, that's what we're gonna honor no more and no less. And so Mayor, can you talk a little bit about in a moment the sales tax that's collected for this service and how it's divided between allied services and Mr. Gordon? And the shortage that we usually face concerning this particular collection of taxes. Lastly, I want to mention to our, about our city budget, it can only do what it can only do. And so we just want to work with what we got and the citizens. They need to know that it's imperative that we understand that when you cut down a whole tree, you must obtain a permit. And from the inspection and compliance office. So Mayor, from my understanding, that application that they go and fill out.
You don't have to get a permit to cut a tree.
Okay, so they don't have to get a permit to cut down a tree?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so the tree service that actually cuts down?
The responsibility is the tree service.
Right, and so it's almost like when they go to get the permit, they're agreeing, just like the demolition application, there's a spot where it says you're gonna be responsible to pick up that debris.
They don't get a tree permit.
They don't get a tree permit.
There is no, there is no permit to cut a tree.
Okay, so the tree cutting service.
Don't tell Jimmy Landry he'll want to get one, but there is no permit to cut a tree.
Right. Well, okay, so I'm glad you cleared that up for us. And so the tree cutting service is actually the one that actually should obtain the permit to get to do the job?
There is no permit to cut a tree.
Okay, so this is the discrepancy, okay? So what's happening is they go in and someone hires someone to cut down several trees, pack them up to the road, and they're stacked and piled high and left there. And so you're saying that we don't have to obtain a permit to get any of this stuff? So the actual tree service just kind of got away scot-free by not being a responsible business owner and just leaving it all there, or should that be included in the price?
It is. Their responsibility is to haul off the tree. Their responsibility is to handle their mess. Yes, yes. But I'll tell you this, okay, because I know we way off topic, but it's okay. I, I will do more because we get these calls a lot, okay, from you councilpeople, from the public, from all kinds of people. I do believe that I'm going to step up our efforts to educate people that you can't cut a whole tree and put it by the side of the road, and that the tree people that you hire and contract with are responsible to pick up the, so I really, like I said, we're a little off topic, but I think it was smart to do it. I definitely am gonna step up my game and on the city's website, as well as anywhere else that I can, to educate people that that's the two biggest problems I see. Is that whole trees being cut by citizens and put to the road, or tree people being hired and then running away from their responsibility, which is to haul it off. So that's two things that I'm telling you, we do need to work on, and I will step our game up because we get many of these calls in my office. I deal with them myself quite often.
The sales tax revenue plays a major role in?
The contracts are tied to the sales tax. So whatever the sales tax brings in, it's split between the two, and there's, it's a little complicated, but there's a a way that they have to give rebates back to adjust to just what the tax brings in. And we have a couple of years left on that contract, and thank God, we have that contract right now because I know that I taxes it down. I'm not being, you know, a I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, but it is a contract that right now, we could not get again, and these two companies can only collect what the tax brings in. Yes, sir.
I know it's not the time to talk about this, but I'm gonna bring it up since Ms. Sherri brought it up.
Okay, I'll let you.
Years back, prior to you being here maybe, we had one time where we had to get a permit to cut down a tree. Because normally, the permit department is there to protect the citizens of the city. I need to get a permit to put an air conditioner in your house, make sure it's done right. Electrician needs to get one. And I think one time, they had to get a permit because of that, it had insurance. Because they don't have insurance, if that tree falls in a house, the homeowners are not protected. They leave. Well, second thing is, we, at one time, we changed, and I'm just saying that by my past experience, that you would come get a permit, they would give them paper, what they're responsible for, make sure they had insurance, and then a permit was not, was a no-charge permit. And all that could have changed in the last few years.
Since I've been here, we have not done.
The responsibility of the permit department is to protect the homeowner for whatever services is done. And I think people that cuts grass, I think they have to be licensed in the city, correct? And insured.
I'm not sure that we.
Because I know we used to send information to them to make sure they don't blow the grass in the street.
But we don't police that. I mean.
We, we need to do something because I know a lot of people that calling, especially now when people out of work, oh, I'm cutting this tree down, and they put it to the road. And it's not the responsibility of the city to pick up those debris because it's a license. It's like me. I can't put my stuff from my old air conditioner system at the road and get going to pick it up. I need to have that part of my course of doing business. And I think since you brought it up, it's a good idea to look into it and see. Because I think a lot of these people doing this might even be charging to bring the wood somewhere else and not doing it. And the homeowner's not getting a fair, because when he do it, you go to your house and someone's to do the work, you think they could take care of the trash. How many people, you know, Mayor, how many times we called you, everybody did, say, hey, they cut this tree down and they need it picked up, but that's not part of their, their job. But they don't know that when they get a price. And I think it's a good time, maybe, not like this week because we've got things going on, but looking to that. Because maybe they should make them get a permit and make them responsible for the.
I know the committee that can investigate it.
Yeah.
I think that this would be one for the ordinance committee that we could at least look at and see what other communities do. Because I do know that we do need to regulate something with the trees.
That's true, because the council members are actually falling in the middle of all of this. And so one lady said, well, I didn't know, you know, I didn't know that you can't do that, but then now all the trees are to the road and she's, you know, you gotta come get these trees. I mean, just, I just didn't know. And it's okay that they don't know, but then it's not okay because what's happening is Mr. Gordon is having to come with two and three and four trucks that we didn't hire him to do.
Or he can't do it.
He's taking the cost. He's, he's taking, yeah, he's taking on the cost, and so he cannot.
And many times, he can't do it.
It's not clear to him as a business owner and as a vendor that's contracted with this, the city.
Cool. I think Marla, you and Nancy.
Since you brought it up, and you brought it up, you kind of said some of the things that I was gonna say. Sorry about that. But no, no, but I don't have to say I'm not, so thank you. But what I have experienced, and it's mostly with the elderly, they're looking for a good deal because most of them on a fixed income. And what I found, the guys are giving them a price that's half of the price of a regular tree service. And they're not telling them, I won't haul it off for this price.
Right.
Because I've investigated, found the tree guy, asked the tree guy, hey, man, how much did you charge him? Well, I charged him $300. I said, well, how much normally would they, oh, it'd be about $1,500. I said, well, that's what the problem is. Why you didn't tell her you wasn't gonna haul it off? And I deal with the, with the tree people, because most of those guys, I know, you know, they've been through a barber shop, saw them in the neighborhoods or whatever, cutting trees. And I say, you're cutting a lot of trees. You're not hauling them off. You're giving good prices, but you're leaving us and the citizen with the bad. I said, come on now, you got the, Jimmy know about this. I said, you got to do a little better than that. Let them know you can't haul it off so they can make provisions to haul it off. You know, it's just like you said, Ms. Sherri, it's about educating the public.
It is.
And letting them know. And the other thing I discovered when reading the contract for the debris for disasters, they pick, they pick up the tree after, after disaster. They pick the trees up, but they charge.
They get paid.
Yeah, they charge. So we have so many, you know, every so often, we have some form of disaster that comes through here. And it may be confusing to the constituent, where they just picked it up for the hurricane. I had two whole trees in front of my, yo.
Oh, that's, believe me, that's.
They picked it up and nobody said nothing. And now I cut a little bitty tree, half of the size of a one or a two, and they don't want to pick it up.
Yeah. No, I agree. I think this is.
So, you know, it's just, it's a public education.
We way off topic, but this is a good conversation.
Yeah, it came up, and it ties in now that we had this contract and seeing kind of where people make that idea from.
It does.
But us voting on this, I does not let Gordon go pick up this tree.
No, no, no. Do you charge them extra to get rid of hair?
No.
Okay, I'll just.
No.
That's an idea.
Look at any barber shop moving, the barber always sweeping up after.
I miss that. Dustin.
All right, yeah, now we're on the topic.
Yes.
You know, we're off topic.
Thank you.
It's relative to.
My district, we did experience it.
Yeah.
We have hortens, I've been talking, I mean, and there's no answer, so.
Because it's a huge tree.
And what it is, the landowner thinks that after the storm has passed, let me go cut a tree down and leave it there, and hopefully they go, but that's not the case. So I guess that tree's gonna sit out there till the next storm.
Yeah.
Maybe. But, but I agree with you. I mean, it's not, it's not in the contract. It's not.
I can't force people to do something that's not in the contract.
So thanks for bringing it up. So now everyone knows on Hortens that it's not us that's causing the issues. So like, you're right, maybe we need to do some more investigation.
I kind of think we did. I'm gonna add that to.
But I'm glad it's been brought up because it has, it's not something that's been swept under the rug.
It is, no, no. I think it was well, a good conversation.
No, all this, all this has started on Emma Street. Getting pogue'd up with this thing. Emma Street, I was sitting up here three months every meeting. Please pick up that big two-story, two or three piles of two and three-story branches and bushes. Dan, you're right. And we hope we don't have to charge the people for this. You know, for this to, they have to come through us to get something going on. That they're gonna pick up, who's gonna pick up before it's being cut? We need it through the zoning board.
Okay.
Somewhere, you know, even if we don't charge them on this particular thing, it'll help us a lot. Clear it up before they go cut that tree. Who's gonna move that tree? Because we have trouble with that, and it was a big pain on my side. And finally, the owner had to pay to move, to remove that tree, the trees off that road. And he's kind of mad at me, but I couldn't do anything to help him.
Right, right.
But Dan, you're right. We have to get some kind of ordinance back again. And maybe not charge the people, just keep that clear, that the tree man got to come talk to us and know the whole rules.
Okay.
Before, because it was a big thorn in my side for three or four months.
Okay, not a problem. Can we move back to four B?
Yep.
Everybody's cool? But a good discussion. So we're on four B, and we're voting on the disaster recovery services contract. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Councilmember Sherri Guidry.
Yes.
Councilmember Dustin Swir.
Yay.
Thank you all. Enjoyed the conversation. Now we move to four C. Madam Clerk?
Resolution awarding debris monitoring services to Bayrod Habits and Associates Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion? Mayor Protem Dan, do I have a second? Councilwoman Ledbetter, is there any discussion? We kind of talked about it at the beginning, but any discussion? Hearing seen none, roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Councilmember Sherri Guidry.
Yes.
Councilmember Dustin Swir.
Yay.
Thank you all very much. Now we move to item five.
Introduction of special bond ordinance. Introduction of special bond ordinance for public hearing on May 5, 2020. Authorizing the issuance and sale of 1,250,000 revenue bonds, series 2020, of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana. Prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of said bonds, designating the date, denomination, and place of payment of said bond. Providing for the payment thereof in principal and interest, authorizing the agreement with the paying agent if necessary, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Swir and a second by Councilman Broussard. Do we have any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sherri Guidry.
Yes.
Councilmember Dustin Swir.
Yay.
Thank you. Item, item six, financial reports.
Presentation by Kevin Zerang, City Treasurer of the November 1, 2019 through February 29, 2020 budget to actual.
I'm gonna move over there still.
That's all. Just stay six feet away from her body.
Yeah, please.
And you will be. You gotta be in the corner.
I probably should have hit myself. I know you got a lot been waiting for this.
Yeah, so.
I'm staying awake for it.
Yeah, so we blank lines this month.
So the intention is where we would just answer questions on periods one, two, and three, and then we would go over period four. Is everyone okay with that? Do we have any questions on period one? Period two? Period three? Okay, period four. We're gonna do it in the past. We'll just do it in totals, if everybody's okay. As of period four, we should be at, after four months, we should be at 33% of the budget. So for general funds, we budgeted 24.9 million in revenue. We're at 7.4, which puts us at 29.7% of the revenue. Expenditures, budgeted at 25.1, actual is 6.4, which puts us at 25.44%. Parks and Recreation, 1.8 in revenue. We're at 875,000, which puts us at 48.61. This is the same situation we have in that we recognize all of the agro-worm tax upfront. When we do send out the bills, we recognize the revenue. Expenses, 1.8, year-to-date is 289,000, which is at 16% of the expenses.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Yeah, why is that we so low on our expenses? It's 16%, and average should be around 33%.
We have some large capital improvement projects that is making up a large portion of those numbers, and we had not started them as of that period.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. Public Works, 2.9 million in revenue. Budgeted, actuals, year-to-date, 1.5, which puts us at 50.15% of the revenue. Same reason as a parks. 3 million in expenses, budgeted, year-to-date is 766,000, which puts us at 25.4% of the budget. Sales tax, revenue is budgeted at 8.8 million, year-to-date is at 2.9, which puts us at 32.9, close, pretty much 33%. Expenses of 9.3 million, year-to-date is 3.1, which puts us at 33.18% of the expenses. Public Safety Fund, which is the police, revenue 3.4 million, year-to-date, 1.1, which puts us at 33% of the revenue. Expenses 3.4, actuals 1.1, leaves us at 33%. Garbage Fund, budgeted. Garbage Fund, budgeted at 5.2, actuals is 1.5, leaving us at 28%. Expenses, 5 million, year-to-date 1.7, leaving us at 33%. Section eight, revenue of 1.4, actuals 458,000, puts us at 33.3%. Expenses, 1.4, actuals 470,000, leaves us at 33.6%. Waste Water, 5 million in revenue, actuals 2 million, leaving us at 38.77%. Expenses, 6 million, actual 1.8, leaving us at 30.8%. Do we have any questions?
Questions, comments? No?
All right, you wanna talk about the other thing?
Yeah, sure.
We received a check today from Iberia Parish, which includes the mosquito, it's not in the packet.
Agreed with that. Agreed with that.
Which includes the refund, the mosquito abatement that we received for the drainage. We had budgeted to be 582,000. We actually received a check for $830,000, which is about 150,000 more than what we had expected. I actually ran a report for the last four years. That's the highest we have received in the last five years.
That's a fact. Long. Yep, yep. It's a drainage project. Which is awesome. No, I can do the next phase of Jefferson Terrace that we are already in the planning, and Leroy and I are meeting on other small, because that's where we really make our bang for the buck, is all those small projects that Leroy is able to do in-house. So, this is gonna give us more money than we've had in the past to do some drainage projects. So, I'm pretty excited about it. When Kevin told me that this afternoon, I was pretty pumped. I mean, that's good news, especially at these times. That money can only be used for drainage, and that fuels a lot of projects. So, I was very glad to see that.
But that shows that our sales taxes up.
Yes, definitely.
They able to get more money.
Definitely, definitely. Great, thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
We will move on to, we have no discussion either. We'll move on to councilmen's remarks, and I think I went around... I don't know which way I went last time. Okay, well then I'll start on this side. Deidre.
Oh, I just wanna say, everybody, stay safe. Stay inside if you can, follow, wash your hands, and just follow the rules as given by our parish president and our governor.
Thank you.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, Mayor, last meeting, we announced that they won't be doing recycling for the next couple of months, or when they would receive their memo because of the virus.
Yes.
Now, people now are asking me, since they're having more people at their house, or their children's there more, people coming in from out of town, can they put their regular garbage in the recycling bin?
Well, for now, both, both cans. Only because so many people are home, Republic could not keep up with the volume of trash, and the fact that Republic have people out from our pandemic, they are putting both trucks in the garbage truck. So, I would think, yeah, it should be reasonable that I want recycling, so as soon as I can go back to recycling, we'll have to put an announcement out so people stop that. That's the only caution, is that they can't contaminate their recycling. So, for now, it's okay, but once we go back to two trucks, they will have to, you know...
Yeah, we might wanna stop that. People, I know we mentioned it last time, but the paper never picked up on it, and people still call me today because of yesterday's Monday on this side of the bayou where I live. And it's still sometime, the first truck picks up the garbage, they still had the second truck that's picking up the recycling, a different truck.
Right, right.
But they can't put garbage in...
I would say for now, they could, I mean, they probably have to clean that can when we go back to recycling.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, Mayor, in Ryan, my district, that's one thing I've been able to do, ride it regularly, and seeing a lot of people working in their yards, and that's a good sight to see. That's letting me know that people still take pride in the community in our town. So, that's one good thing that has come out of this pandemic. And like Ms. Ledbetter said, everybody else is saying, you know, stay safe, wash your hands, follow the rules of CDC, the WAHOP, our state, and our local governments.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce-Horn?
Our veterans are very much appreciated of our, by the Cabal boat. Everything getting started, they're very much, I hear and feel. I run my district too. And we wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor, your group, I can't compliment them enough. They're coming through to clean up the district while we on this bad times. I see them out there. And if anything, I've been cleaning the last couple of months better than we've been before. No tires. Don't start it.
Never been mentioning it.
We'll come hunt you down. Don't put tires, don't dump them. Legally get rid of your tires. It's so nice when you don't see dumps of tires. So, I appreciate it, citizens, y'all, report anything you see. We'll go check on it.
Thank you, thank you. Dustin?
I have none tonight, thank you.
Great. I just have one. Put this out today. It, I got some, this is teamwork. The parish president, as well as all the mayors in our parish, we've been talking and getting together, and I've gotten a lot of calls from citizens and businesses of what can be open, what can't be open. As you know, other communities have just really gotten a clarification. So, that's what we did. We got a clarification from the governor's office, and basically, the businesses that are essential were deemed they could open. The businesses that were non-essential and told to close, and they were listed, closed. But there's a whole lot of businesses in the kind of a gray area that they didn't have any direction really either way. So, we got some clarity on that, and that allows many small businesses. Some examples would be jewelry stores, small gift shops, small furniture stores, clothing stores. You still have to abide by the rules. You know, we're not doing anything new here. This is following the governor and everything that he's put out, the parish president. And what happens is, the parish president handles these things. He is over us and has the authority in these emergencies to issue orders. And we will comply with those orders. I mean, we're all working together, and we wanna be safe, and we wanna do the right thing. But there were many businesses that were left behind that could open, and what's happened is, they've begun to open as they see other communities. So, what we wanted to do was just, as a team, get the word out. You still have to practice social distancing, it's still no more than 10 people. Of course, you still have to wash your hands, sneeze in your elbow, all of those requirements. Stay six feet apart as we are tonight. You know, when you go, you're advised to wear a mask in public. Those are the kinds of things that we certainly want to encourage. At the same time, you know, it's tough out there. You know, not only is the pandemic still going on, not only do we still have deaths, and any death is too many, not only do we still have more cases in some areas, some areas are waning. The projections are not as, thank God, the projections are not as dire as they were in the beginning of this. So, thank God for that. At the same time, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that our economy's crashing. Now, we're all in the same boat, but, you know, we have stores that are closing that probably will not reopen. We have people that are struggling, business owners, 40, 50-year-old businesses that are struggling that don't know if they can open. Our unemployment rate is higher than it's been in many, many years. There are some federal help, you know, PPP that people are waiting on, that's payroll protection. There are SBA loans that people are waiting on. I mean, the system has been overloaded. As we shop local and buy local, we go to our local banks, they had to get educated on how to do it, and many of them were not SBA, you know, registered, so that took a while. But, you know, help is coming. But on the flip side, there are times that, as much as I love our federal government and our state government, we have to help ourselves. So, we clarified what businesses could open. I do know that the parish president's been working diligently on putting some orders together, and he is gonna be coming out with more orders, which is great. And we want people to stay safe. We want economic activity, but not at the expense of someone's health. We're not advocating, if you need to stay home, stay home. If you are compromised, you know, stay home. If you're, just don't feel I should get out, that's fine. So, we're not saying that you have to. But if you're going to, of course, we would want you to shop local. We would want to support these businesses that have been there and been our partners through thick and thin in our community. This is something we've never faced before. But, and, you know, there's some tough times coming. Can I tell you that my department heads, you as a council, because you are the first step, and one of the most important steps, putting the budgets together is kind of, our job is department heads and administration, then we present it to y'all, and y'all do, you know, approve it, and we all think about it. We're on our budget. We are doing well. You looked at that tonight. We're at the 33% or lower that we need to be across the board. That's great teamwork. Now, one of the problems is, we projected a 2% increase, which was happening. Well, that's not gonna happen, so now I look at it like my budget's 2% off. Do I realize the number of stores that are closed? Sure, I do. Have we been looking and researching our taxes and looking at who's closed that isn't generating any money? Who maybe is generating more money than they have before? Who is, you know, gonna break even, who is not gonna do anything? Of course we are. So, we're not out of the woods. Now, if our economy comes back robust, we'll be fine. We have reserves, we have some emergency money. We have, you know, areas that we can make cuts. Every department head is putting together a list in case we would have to look at cuts. We are in the middle of budget for this month, for a two-month period. We're looking at our budgets now and projecting the future and making sure that we're all on task and all up for the challenge if it does become that we have to make some cuts. We unfortunately had to lay 10 people off, the part-time workers in the park, because the parks are still closed. We, you know, we're looking at any cuts we would have to make. But the point of this was to say that businesses are reopening. They are gonna have to follow the protocols, support those people, because that's your neighbors, that's your friends, that's the people that live in this town. We're in this together, the parish and the city and the three other mayors, you know, we all talk often. We are all working, searching, using our delegation, using the governor's office, any resource we have to look, our senators. I wrote a letter today on the federal level. We are doing everything we can to look for help, look for ways that if resources, there's $1.8 billion in federal money that has come, that will come down through the governor. We're trying to access any of that we can. Can it go to municipalities? Can it go to towns? How will this work? You know, what do we qualify for? Supposedly, there's another stimulus package coming out for exactly that, for governments, for municipalities, for towns. We are very much in tune, looking for that. You know, so stay tuned, because things are moving, and they're moving fast. But I just wanted to make an announcement that teamwork works, you know? We saw that with the police department. We saw that we all pulled together as a common goal, and we have changed the, you know, the face of our town. We're gonna have to do it again. This is a different animal, it's an invisible enemy and, you know, that we can't control. Once it's gone, though, what we can control is, to the best of our ability, is getting back to work, is supporting these businesses, and pulling together to support our economy. I think that's very important. So, I just wanted to bring up kind of what was happening, and like I said, things are changing. I watched the governor today on TV, and if the numbers stay as they are or continue to improve, he said he thought that May 1st, he would be issuing some new orders. So, we'll just have to wait and see and, you know, work with them, of course. But it is a moving target. But it is one that we are up for the challenge, and we just have to, you know, stay the team that we are and work through it. That's it. Call for a motion to adjourn?
Some motion.
Thank you all.